...to hold a project hearing on the proposed projects. If you're interested in speaking at the hearing, please make sure you assign in on the sheet in the back of the room. And please include your name and address. After a presentation by administrators and advisors, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments for the project. At the hearing, we ask each person to limit their comments to three minutes and the topic we leave to the proposed projects under construction. Notes of the project here was published as legally required. At this time, I will ask the superintendent to explain the purpose of the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pursuant to Indiana Code 20-26-7-3, before a school corporation may spend more than $1 million to build, repair, or alter a school building that will be financed by a lease or bonds, it must hold a public hearing at which explanations of the potential value of the project to the school corporation and the community are given. These public hearings and the adoption of the resolution at the beginning of the legal process, these resolutions establish a maximum financial terms for the proposed projects. The board may reduce the size of the borrowing at any time prior to the sale of the bonds.
We will now hear from the superintendent about the process of determining and communicating the projects to the community and the need for projects. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes. Our school corporation continues the need to update our facilities and to replace and refresh our buildings within the corporation. We will be issuing bonds for the construction and improvements up to our school buildings and our property.
Are we ready, Mr. Superintendent?
We're ready. No, next one down.
We will now hear from the superintendent about the proposed projects meet the needs.
The 2024 bonds will address the following issues but not limited to: RES, work on the two educational wings of the building; additional sprinkler system, building of walls, classroom doors, and replacing ceiling tiles; new flooring in the gym, classroom furniture, updated technology in the classrooms; track resurfacing, based on the current condition of our track, a whole new track will be needed; replace windows and doors at RES in BRMS; replace the chiller at BRMS; and create an exit driveway at RES for traffic flow and steeple safety.
We will now hear from Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors. Our municipal advisor about the proposed project will be financed as well as information about the effect on a typical property taxpayer. Mr. Hammond?
I got you. Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. I am Jeff Hammond. I'm with Baker Tilly. We serve as the school corporation's municipal financial advisor, so we assist with the bond issuance process as well as project planning. So my portion tonight of the presentation is going to focus on the financial parameters that will be considered by the board this evening. And as Mr. Jamison mentioned, these are maximum parameters established at the beginning of the project process. Once the bonds are issued, it's likely that these financial parameters we'll look at will be less. However, at this point in the process, we build in some conservative interest rates and it's important to establish these maximums as to not exceed these numbers. If things go kind of haywire in the markets like we've seen the past couple days, it's important to have a little cushion built into these rates. So I want to just start with that as I go through this presentation this evening. So with the first slide that I'll go through, it is a chart of the school's existing bond payments. That will probably come up here in a minute. The school has three bonds currently outstanding. You can see here kind of what the annual payments look like. So in 2024, the total payments on those three bonds are about $3.3 million. It really is going to maintain about that level until 2029. Then there's a step down in payments, another step down in 2031, and then after 2035, all of the bonds that the school corporation currently has outstanding would be fully matured at that time. We've also included on this secondary axis, the line here represents the estimated debt service tax rate. So it is the tax rate needed by the school corporation to make these debt service payments. So we'll kind of revisit this in a little bit when we talk about the specific bonds to fund the proposed project, but I always like to start with just kind of a picture of the current bonds and the payments outstanding on those. We can skip over this one. This is just the data that populated that chart for each of the three bonds currently outstanding. So coming to kind of a summary of the bond that would fund the proposed projects, again mentioning these are maximums. So even with the borrowing amount, this is a not to exceed number. The school could always borrow less than this, but they cannot borrow more once they adopt resolutions. So we're currently setting that maximum borrowing amount at $6,350,000. That translates to about $6,120,000 in terms of proceeds that can be applied towards the construction, hard and soft construction cost. The difference between the borrowing amount and the amount available for the projects is similar to if you were to take out a loan in your personal life, there are things called issuance costs associated with issuing the bonds. The bank that provides the funding takes a percentage, and so that's why there's a slight difference between the amount borrowed and the amount available for the projects. We're assuming that these bonds would be repaid over a 10-year period, so just slightly longer than 10 years. We're assuming the estimated interest costs would be over the lifetime of those 10 years, again amortized at some conservative interest rates, to be just over $2.5 million over the lifetime of the bonds. The maximum annual lease rental payment or the maximum payment, we are setting at $1,539,000. And that maximum payment at today's net assessed value translates to a maximum tax rate of 12.28 cents. Lastly, probably most importantly, is we're anticipating that this project, this bond issue, would not increase the tax rate over where it is currently, and I'll show you why that's the case in just a minute. But again, these are the maximum parameters that will be in the resolutions considered by the board. So the next slide, in this kind of bluish darker color, I'm not sure what to actually call that, but this darker color here, those are the payments we looked at on the first slide. And the lighter blue represents a proposed repayment structure on a bond that could fund the project being considered. This is not by any means what the bonds have to look like when they're sold, but it does represent a potential repayment structure on a bond of this size. So you'll notice that as the existing bond payments step down, we increase the payments on the newer bond being considered. The goal is to kind of wrap those payments to where the tax rate is consistent and level over time. I will also note that these are based on the 2024 net assessed value. A couple days ago, the 2025 net assessed value was released, and think of that as all of the taxing, the taxable property within the school district, and it is a function of how the tax rate is determined, and that went up 15% over last year. So that means that assuming the payment remains the same, if the net assessed value is higher, that translates to a lower tax rate. So this should be, again, a very conservative estimate of the tax rate based on where that net assessed value really came in. And I believe that is the final slide ahead. So I will be around in the front row if there are any questions I can answer. Does anyone on the board have any questions you would like me to address?
We aren't doing anything with the old bonds, right? They're staying out there. We aren't restructuring them. We aren't doing, we're just adding this new bond.
Correct. Yeah, the old bonds, whenever you sell a bond, those payments are locked in. The rates aren't variable. They're fixed at that point in time. There may be some opportunities. I don't think any of the current bonds are callable. I was actually talking to Mr. Peters about this a little bit ago. We can look into that. But with the bond issue, since you actually sell that to investors who hold those bonds as an investment, there are set call dates that you can be eligible to refund or refinance those. So it's not just like you could do it at any time, but we're always evaluating that. And if rates drop to where that makes sense and they have that call feature, we can look at doing that. Thank you.
One of the things that was difficult for me to understand as a new board member was that having, let me see if I say this right, and somebody might have to correct me. Using our ability to borrow is vital for us being able to have access to that tax rate money. If we don't borrow and use it, then some other entity could get it. Am I saying that right? Okay. So that was a difficult thing for me to understand, and that having debt is good for our tax rate. Or isn't bad for our tax rate, maybe?
Correct. So issuing additional bonds and kind of wrapping them around as your existing step down is a way to hold your rate steady over time. And as a property taxpayer, it's not just the school's tax rate that you're paying your total tax bill on. It's also the counties, the libraries, there's many other districts as well. So theoretically, the school could drop the tax rate and another entity increase the tax rate and absorb that, and then you would not be able to recoup those dollars that you could levy for without increasing the rate.
Right. Thank you for saying what I tried to say much more eloquent. The other thing that we have talked a lot about on the board is how much our buildings need work. And so, you know, I know we're taking on a lot of debt, but we've got to play catch-up with our buildings and get them back because right now that elementary is getting better. But this is needed.
And I also tell you that we also have two other Asian buildings on our list of things, so it's all going to be part of the process.
Yeah. Yep.
The three big ones are high school, which is now 24 years past construction, the two new elementary schools, and they're getting paid down fairly well right now. Now, recently, we made some major expense at the middle school, the auditorium, and now the grade school, which is unbelievably 50 years old now. I remember what it was new.
We will now open the public hearing. Remember, if you would like to speak, please sign in. I have the sheet up here. The sheet, which is located up here with me. As I mentioned earlier, we ask that you state your name, your address, limit your comments to the proposed projects and financing. Keep your comments to three minutes. Avoid being repetitive if possible. I have the sheet here. I have two parents' names. I didn't know if they were to sign in or they wished to speak. Todd Akia, would you like to speak? Matthew Jones?
No, thanks.
Okay. I'll have all the administrators. All right, the administrator's wishing to speak.
Thank you for participating in the hearings. Since we have no public comments, we appreciate your time and interest in the process. The board will work with administration as professionals to look for the efficiencies to conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. Mr. Superintendent, would you please summarize the project resolution?
The project resolution is required when the school is planning to spend more than $1 million per building. This contains an estimated hard and soft construction cost and the cost of issuance and establishment and the total project cost. It also contains the estimated tax impact.
Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the project resolution?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all faves say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carries. Mr. Superintendent, would you please summarize the reimbursement resolution?
The next resolution is the reimbursement resolution relating to the financing of the construction project. This resolution permits the school corporation to reimburse itself from bond proceeds for any cash which might spend on the project prior to the closing on the bonds. It is required by federal law in order to preserve the school corporation's ability to reimburse itself.
Could I have a motion and a second to adopt the reimbursement resolution?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All faves say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. And that concludes the public meeting. Mr. Jamison? Let us open the regular board meeting with a pledge of allegiance followed by a bonus silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Rush County School's vision statement is to achieve personal excellence through a wide range of educational challenges and opportunities. Do we have any public comments today? Hearing done, we'll go on to the next phase. Hearing on projects?
You already got that?
We're down to tell me something good. Ms. Sarah Mastin?
Well, Mr. President, I've got a little switch on. At this time, I'd like to call Brevin Renabon up to tell me something good.
So we're going to take a moment. We're going to recognize each and every one of the building techs at this time for the tell me something good in each building. So we're going to start. I'm going to go through one at a time. If you guys just come up here and stand. We're going to start with India. India is our tech at Arlington and Millroy. India has done a phenomenal job at revamping our website. She has gone above and beyond in utilizing her creative niche to overhaul the website's look and functionality, as well as improve experiences for our staff and families who visit the website. She has done extremely well with marketing and makes things look very pretty, which is something I'm not very good at. She has also pulled lots of analytics from the website, and as a former, we get over 2,000 clicks a week. In addition to the website, she has taken on the role of assisting principals with the Facebook pages and has been the person behind the majority of the marketing that we post. She has done more than what has been asked of her and is always looking for new ways to grow and obtain new responsibilities. She has a vision for our platform and sees how things could be, and she executes it. She also assisted with registration this summer and has been working diligently on making that a better process for parents. This process has not been edited in several years, and we were able to make lots of improvements with her help. We are lucky to have her. Next up, we have Arina Moore, our tech at Arlington. Arina is silent but deadly. She knows her stuff and has an enormous amount of students and staff to service. She has the second largest building, and with construction and all the movement at the elementary, she is tremendous at being adaptable and flexible. She is extremely dependable at getting a job well done. I find myself trying to call her and see if I can help her with something, only to find out she's already got it taken care of. She never complains and is very quiet. During our meetings, she usually doesn't have much to say, but when she does, it's usually super funny and you'd better be listening. She loves to coordinate with her fellow staff members, especially with India, on things at the elementary level. I've seen her grow tremendously in both her confidence and abilities over the past 12 months in IT, having started with us fresh out of school. She has also taken classes on learning about networking, and I have set her on several tasks, which she did a great job on, collecting data for the RES remodel. She has a tremendous work ethic, and I can see great things for her in her IT career. Next up, we have Chrissy Tamling. Chrissy is our tech at the middle school. She has been a tremendous asset in our corporation for many years. She is our veteran team member in our work model. She has witnessed many changes over the years and has stepped outside her comfort zone recently and embraced change in her buildings with new phases of technology, including a new BRMS lab, which she is helping oversee and install. As a former teacher and with two students in our corporation, she brings both the teacher and parent perspective to our team. During our meetings, she always thinks of things we don't for this very reason. She constantly keeps me on my toes and challenges me as well with new ideas and questions I had not even thought of. Her perspective always has tremendous insight and wisdom. She says it how it is and is not afraid to tell me exactly what we're lacking in or if we're doing something wrong or could be doing better. This is wonderful because it makes our team stronger and provides much better service to our staff and students. She is a wonderful asset to our team. Next up is Zach, who couldn't be here tonight. He's playing at a softball tournament.
That's because he's married.
He's my right-hand man, and I am constantly asking him for advice and bouncing ideas off of him. He's a tech at the high school, and he runs a tight ship. He has always assisted me with network trouble, working on cameras, and has always told me about the latest and greatest tech ideas that we're not doing but we could be. If I'm stumped, I can set him on a task to investigate, and he will come back with the right answer or an even better idea than I have. He's extremely good at finding new resources for us to try and implement and always says, "Hey, did you know we could do this?" He is full of ideas, innovation, and cares about all of our teachers and things running smoothly. He loves to implement new cool technology for teachers that is convenient, quick, and easy to use. He goes out of his way and works over hours to make sure a job gets done to completion. This fall, he will be taking on new responsibilities as my assistant in addition to his building responsibilities. Thank you, Zach. Last but not least, Nicole Tuttle. She is our intern for the summer. We have been blessed to have Nicole as our intern this summer. She is a beast and an absolute workhorse. She has worked hard and diligently this whole summer in the ceiling tile pulling wire for vape detectors, labs, and helping install new access points in the Laughlin Center and Gym, and has assisted me with replacing several switches in our infrastructure to beef up as we get ready for the next generation of individuals. She has touched nine switches altogether, which means she has configured over 432 individual ports. She has spent countless hours of time behind the scenes doing the dirty work to keep the wheels spinning. We would not have made half as much progress this summer as we would if she were not here. In addition to helping with the network projects, she has assisted Zach and Chrissy with the two labs at the middle school and high school. She has been an absolute pleasure to work with. We're going to miss her if she goes back to Purdue to finish up her senior year in cybersecurity. Good luck.
And Brevin, on behalf of the board, cannot say enough about your team and what you guys have accomplished in eight weeks, with you being off with your foot too, but the team really stepped up, and we got a lot of stuff done. There's still more to do, but we made a huge dent and could not do it without every one of you. We really appreciate everything you've done. I'm going to open it up to the principals because they're the ones that said, "We got to honor these guys" here at the board meeting. So principal, I'll open it up to you if there's anything you'd like to say.
I would love to speak about India for just a second. I just want to use today as an example of why I appreciate her. She walked into this meeting with her computer and was answering questions that I had asked her earlier in the day. She goes between two different buildings, and that's a lot to double and to kind of take care of. But I think I emailed her four times maybe before noon today, and she has all of those things finished, and she was finishing the last of them as she was walking in here. So I appreciate her dedication to our teachers and our students and making sure she was diligent that she was going to make sure the teachers were ready to go tomorrow, and I think that's really important, and I appreciate her. We definitely couldn't do what we do at Arlington without her.
I can attest to how Arina just is always, always willing to help, and she's very quiet, but her sense of humor is just, she makes me laugh every single day. And with having 700 students and the teachers' new computers and just all of our tech problems, and she just has a magical era around her. We can have all these technical issues, and she walks into the room and magically just starts behaving again. She says, her sense of humor is like, "I tell it to do that so it's job security." I mean, she's just, she's really funny when you get to know her and when she'll talk. She's a pleasure to work with.
I think over the short time I've been here, Chrissy probably wants to shut the door behind her desk every time she sees me because I have relied on her a lot to answer questions and to take care of situations that I don't have the tech skills to do. So just really appreciate everything as a new administrator coming into the corporation, everything that she's done. I've seen her on the floor, under desks, stringing wire, everything. She's all around, whatever's needed done, she'll do it, and there's never a complaint, and just really appreciate everything. Well, you don't complain to me. So just really appreciate everything she's done to help us get off to get ready for school. Thank you.
All right, Zach's not funny, and Zach, he complains a lot. No, really, Zach is this kind of guy that you hit the nail on the head, Brevin. Like, if you know Zach, he's like this all the time. And he does stuff, and I know it frustrated Brevin because we had to do a last-minute room switch, and they were asked to have their computers put in another location and all this, probably something that in their world should have been down here on the Stone Pole right now because we could still start school. No, Zach went and did it. I mean, he just did it, and he got it all done, and he did everything, and that's the kind of guy he is. We had the Chromebook pass out last night. We changed that a little bit this year. We had a great turnout, and Zach headed up all that. He's just an amazing guy to have around. He does a great job at everything he does. Nicole, though, I do got to brag on her a little bit though, because this summer, we had two labs in our building, and Brevin comes to me and says, "Hey, we got to tear down one of these labs." Cool, all right. Last year, we didn't use either one. So I wanted to tear one down and use it as another business room, and everybody was on board. So what happened? Nicole tears it all down. Change month. We want to tear the other one down, and we want to put that one back. She thought we were kidding. She looked just at it. You're lying. No, we're not really lying. But after a few choice comments, she put the lab back up, and that takes a lot of time to put all those computers. How many were in that room?
Closer to 30.
Close to 30 computers that she had torn down, taken out, and had to bring back in and put back together. So workhorse right there. She's got a great career in anything that she does ahead of her. So thank you for everything you've done for us this summer.
All right, we've got some pretty cool things we're going to do this year, and these guys have all grown immensely over the past 12 months, and I can't wait to see what's in store next. So thanks. Thanks, everybody.
Certificates are, Brevin. Oh, they're, and he even got a gift card.
He's a rookie.
Certificates are... Reverend? Oh, they're... And he even got a gift card.
He's a rookie.
Zach Morris. Did he sign in?
Fair. Fair comment.
Wow.
Fair comment. I'm just glad we have air conditioning in high schools.
Well, I'm working on a couple other buildings to prepare, so.
It's hard. It'll knock you down if you want.
Next, our board comments before we take the break. I'm going to start on Mr. James.
I don't want to see you cry. Want to thank everybody for yesterday. The meal went real good. An extra special. Thank you to the cafeteria staff for putting that together, and an extra thank you too to Steve Souter and Souter Farms for donating the corn. Drive's West 23, so when teachers, when you see them, tell them thank you. So, other than that, have a great year.
Jeff, it's a wonderful thing that you do for our teachers with putting together the hog roast for them on that first day. And thanks to Angie and Tammy for taking food out to Arlington and Norroy, so they didn't have to stand around two hours. I want to recognize the presentation, Mr. Jameson, that you did yesterday for the teachers to show them what you've tried to do over the last two years to help them out financially, and hopefully they understand that this board has that as one of our priorities, that we continue to work hard to see that they get more money in their pockets. Last thing, one of the saddest things that I saw on the news, first day of school at another district, and a student got hit while going to the bus because somebody failed to stop for the stop arm. Parents, drivers, anybody out there in the county, when you come across our buses, be aware, keep your eyes open, don't be in a big hurry, and when that stop arm comes out, stop, because we do not want to have our students harmed in any way trying to come to school each day.
Congratulations to all of you that were honored tonight. Just want to thank you as a board, because we're well aware you aren't getting to work with the highest-tech stuff. We're aware of it. We're going to work on it. We really appreciate what you do to make what we have the best that it can be. So, thank you all, and then I wish you all a great start to the year and a great year ahead of you.
Mr. Lyman?
I have nothing.
I don't have to hear it.
I was excited to be able to be there yesterday. I haven't been to an opening day ceremony in a few years, and it was my first that I've been a part of yours, and it was nice to see the excitement and to remember how it feels to get everybody back together, and you're sitting with your teacher friends again, and you could just feel the excitement that our teachers have for coming back and being with the students of our community. So, I really anticipate this is going to be a great year. I'm excited to see the things that are going to go on. So, good luck and have a great year. Go get 'em.
I want to say welcome to our Indian administration administrators. We're glad to have you on board. Chris, you should... you should have warned me about a couple things I was going to push you on the nose. One is, I want to say thank you for getting rid of this flower pot in front of the high school. Number two is, I talked to Mr. Turner yesterday, and I found out more about turf management and what the football field needs that I could even try to absorb with that 15-minute conversation, but he could give you a fair warning that while I was walking into, I asked him how things were going down the field, but you left me out the drive. We'll talk about that later. I just look around at our campus, and it's spit and shine, and we have the new flags up, trying to brand our schools, and we're trying to put on our best show, our best face for our kids and our teachers and our staff, and I got the person to witness the administration working hard all summer to get this prepared, and sometimes, thank you's not enough, but thank you all very much, what you do for our kids and what you do for our staff. Appreciate it very much. At this point, we'll take a five-minute break if you want to take pictures, Reverend, and then we'll come back. Notice, Magic, we're here five minutes since we don't have that many people to deal with the...
Teacher evaluations planned?
Yes, the new teacher evaluation rubric. I have met with the Rush County Federation of Teachers. We have worked through some details. I appreciate everyone working to create an evaluation handbook that works on a continuous improvement of our teaching staff, better serve our students. No action is needed to be taken, but I am required to give the board a copy of the evaluation rubric for this year.
Mr. Superintendent, go ahead with the consent items, please.
Sir, donations, miscellaneous school supplies from John and Jean Bohm to RES. I seek the board's approval of the July School Board Minutes, claims and payroll, personnel report, and donations as stated.
I'm going to take personnel report, take it separate. Got your point. So for the other three, for approval of minutes, donations, claims, and payroll, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing now, call for the vote. All favors say aye. Carries. Now we'll do the personnel report. There will be a couple of sentences, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the personnel report.
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sustain. All those abstained?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider request to advertise budgets.
I'm requesting the authority to be granted to myself to advertise the 2025 budgets. Notice the taxpayers for the capital projects plan. Notice the taxpayers for the bus replacement plan. I seek the board's approval to advertise the budget by August 16th for the September 3rd School Board Budget Period.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
Summon.
Second.
Have a motion, second, discussion. Hearing now, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sustain. Motion carries. Second reading on teacher appreciation grant policy 320.01.
State law now requires that every school corporation to annually adopt a policy by September 15th in regards to the teacher appreciation grant. This was formerly known as the school performance award. Language also now states that the highly effective teacher must receive a stipend of 25% more than the effective will receive. The new language was added by the Indian Department of Education and the state legislature. I have met with the Rush County Federation of Teachers, and they have approved this updated policy. I seek the board's approval for the tag grant for the 2024-2025 school year.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion, second, discussion.
So only the highly effective and effective teachers would get money?
Any other discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sustain. Motion carries. Consider renewal of the athletic trainer agreement between Rush Memorial Hospital and Rush County Schools.
This is an annual thing that we do. We have outsourced the services of an athletic trainer from Rush Memorial Hospital to service our athletic events. Coverage includes 800 hours for high school events and 113.5 for middle school events. The cost four years ago was $25,500. However, we started trading for sponsorship at our facilities and contests, which gave us a 50% reduction. So our costs again this year will be $12,500. Prices have gone up from the previous year, but I will be seeking your approval to enter into this agreement with Rush Memorial Hospital.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second, discussion. Hearing now, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sustain. Motion carries. Consider the approval of obsolete Chromebooks and buyback from secure tech solutions.
This is something new that we had a... the CyberTech Solutions reached out to Reverend, purchasing our outdated Chromebooks. It's better to get something than nothing, and they have offered to buy our obsolete Chromebooks for $2,000.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Summon.
Second. Have a motion, second, discussion.
Reverend, what do they do with these Chromebooks a day?
It depends. Most of the time, they'll give it a rating of an A, a B, a C, or a D quality. A being functional, B the cosmetic there, and C and then D, et cetera, being like no good at all. So what they'll do is they'll actually strip them down and sell the parts as used parts back to wholesalers or eBay or other places that you can buy used computer parts at. The motherboards are obsolete and will not update anymore, so that's the majority of where the value is. The other part... or the other major value is in screens, but we keep so many of those on hand, we haven't had to buy a Chromebook screen in several years, just because we save the old ones because they're all compatible. So we'll keep about 200 or 300 screens extra every year and then just sell the rest for scrap, because they don't update, they're obsolete, and most of the parts will not fit the new Chromebooks. So, moving forward, though, we have bells across the whole board, so we'll probably sell last next year, just for the simple fact that we can use the bezels, the back screens. We can use more parts out of those bells, the keyboards, because it's all the same district line. It's all the same model, or a variation of that model, so.
How many of the Chromebooks are we dealing with?
Depends on the year. Right now, there's about 700, 750, so you're getting almost $3 of device out of them, $2.50 of device, depending on the quality. This year, since we have two years worth of Chromebooks, we had 750, and they just offered us a flat rate instead of actually going through and rating them, which, trust me, the flat rates better, because these are in pretty rough shape, so.
Will we have to pay to get rid of the Chromebooks?
No. No. You just wouldn't have gotten anything for them.
Any other discussion? Hearing now, call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sustain. Motion carries. Consider carrying an agreement with EF Business Solutions.
I'm seeking the board's approval to enter to an agreement with EF Business Solutions to help oversee the 2024-2025 budget, tax rate, and gateway submissions. We did this last year, and it was a traditional practice for outside consulting firms to review the budgets before we enter them into gateway for submission.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second, discussion.
So every school pays a consultant to do this?
A majority, especially early on in their superintendency, because it is very well-known there was one superintendent who did not use a consulting fee, made a mistake by a decimal, costing taxpayers in the county a million dollars. It's kind of...
Yeah.
So you want to make sure you get this right. Year three, I'm getting a lot better, but I'm not there yet, and I think...
So just something we can look at doing away with next year?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Hearing now, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sustain? Motion carries. Consider renewal contract between Rush Memorial Hospital, Rush County Schools for physical therapy and occupational therapy services.
This cost will range from about $40 to $60 an hour. This is something that we continue on every year. I seek the board's approval to accept the contract with Rush County Schools and Rush Memorial Hospital for PT and OT services. How many hours per year has it been recently? I could not tell you to be honest with you, but I will find out for you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Also keep in mind, I think, and I'll say this for Jim, that finding a school physical therapist, or finding a school occupational therapist is close as it would possible, okay? That the need for the services is great, the people out there that can do it are few, and if they're willing to do it for us, it's a great service to our schools at that price.
Yes. Pay triple.
Any other discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sustain? Motion carries. Other, my favorite thing.
I have two things for other. First is junior high science textbooks. We had changed companies to meet the new Indiana science standards. I seek the board's approval to adopt these new science textbooks for grades seven and eight.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Having a motion second, discussion. Hearing now, call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sustain? Motion carries. Number two, Mr. Hamus.
I just want to personally say thank you to Mr. Hamus, Souders Farms for their donation of corn. It is, it is a great meal to have your, your whole entire, all your employees together. We're already going to work on some changes so we don't have to send food out to Millroy and Arlington, but also to the board members that were available to come and help us out and even at the breakfast and stuff, so. Just, it's just a great day and like I said, the excitement last night, oh my lord, we had the open houses, you couldn't find a parking place anywhere, the schools were just abuzz, and I haven't seen that since before that dreaded seaward. And it's so great to see our schools back open up and parents coming back and teachers excited, it's just, we're looking for a great year. And it all kicks off tomorrow and we'll be nervous nellies in the morning to make sure we get the kids picked up and on time, but we're going to do it, so. Those are my, my two things and just wish the staff a great year.
Continue on an important date, sir.
Yes, obviously, the first student day is tomorrow, grades K through 12. There will be no early release and thanks to India blasting it out on social media and stuff, I think everybody's gotten it, I think she set it up for two or three times to make sure that gets out there. August 19th, we will publish the budget. September 3rd will be our regular board meeting at 7:00 PM with a public hearing on the proposed budget. October 1st will be our regular school board meeting at 7:00 PM, official school board adoption of the proposed 2025 budgets.
You're going to start first tonight?
Great.
Mr. Peters?
I don't have a lot because it all really lumps together. I just got a message of gratitude. There's a lot that goes into getting buildings and our facilities and transportation ready, and there's a, it takes a village truly and contributions of a lot of people to add up to the overall sum of what we're trying to do. It's never perfect and it's, it's never easy, but our staff has come together to get everything ready. We're still, we're still talking about making sure the air conditioning's working, where's Warren Cook? We're still talking about making sure the floor shine, still talking about RES, we're still talking about making sure all the kids get picked up in the morning, we're still getting those weeds pulled, we're still looking at all the things, there's just, it just never ends. Just know that there's, if we're, we're in an imperfect system, but there's a lot of efforts and a lot of people trying to get it right. And remember the human side of that as we work to get better. Appreciate the comments about our facilities looking nice, there is still places where we want to grow and get better, and please, when you deliver that message, deliver it to me, but also if you talk to our people, deliver that with care because realize that a lot of work has gone into it and I'm proud of our team, and we got, we got a good team from, all the way from transportation and maintenance and custodial. We're fully staffed right this second. Bus, busing is always a thing, trying to staff that, and I had a, I had something happen in the 11th hour that caused us to deviate, so. But we're good, we're prepared and grateful, and let's get it started, let's go, because I think, I think we're all better when our kids are in the building. I think our community is better and we're ready, so let's do it.
Your example, Mr. Turner was so excited to show me pictures of how he was mowing the field, it was almost looks like turf. It's almost looks like, sort of, he, he pumped about taking care of this.
I will not bog the meeting down with those comments, but I will say that Brett has invested a lot of effort into getting the grass green and the athletic facilities in particular to get it at the condition we want and the expectations that we have, so kudos to him and kudos to the grounds guys. They've been sweating, it's hot. So proud of them, happy, ready to go, and a little, a little anxious to get started tomorrow, but as Mrs. Kessler tells me, it'll all be okay, so we're good.
Got one question.
Yes, sir.
Part-time bus driver.
Yes, sir.
I noticed the, with the construction going on with RES, how are we going to do the front, because I've seen a lot of those construction vehicles sitting in the front.
They're going to be out, they're going to be out, and it was discussed putting a dumpster in the parking lot, and yours truly vetoed that intentionally for the buses, so.
I just didn't know how, if there was that idea.
Yeah, it'll, it'll, I've been assured that they're going to be out of there because they know that we need the parking lot, so.
I just didn't know.
If I need to put somebody in a headlock tomorrow, we can do that, so, yeah. Good question. Yeah, stopfarms too, Mr. Banks, good one. That, that is, we're one tragedy away from being devastated, so please, honor the stop farm. We can wait. Good, that's it.
Mrs. Kramer, you're on.
Okay, I've given you the interest earned for up through July, so our interest to date of all the accounts is $268,000. I've also given you the bank fund balance report. That's all through July 31st, and I just wanted to thank my staff, and I also want to thank Michelle Kessler, because we're really, really busy right now getting the old people out of the system and getting the new people, and there's too much, too many people, so I wanted to thank them for all their work.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
All right. Well, we're fully staffed with teachers, we're still looking for a couple of assistants, but we're doing great on teachers, and I know they're excited to get going tomorrow. Huge thank you to transportation, we have special education students being bused from all four corners of the county, and we're pretty thin out there with our special ed buses, but they've done a great job getting that all set up so we can get our students to school. We met yesterday with our paraprofessionals, did a training, and we received a paraprofessional grant again for this year, so we will continue that, and they were excited about that, it's online training that they can do and they receive a stipend for doing that. It's a nice way to help out our assistants who do a wonderful job in the classrooms, get a little extra money, and also to learn a lot about working with our students in special education. Tanner and I, we're looking forward to a great school year. If you're ever out by Arlington, that's where we are now, stop on by, but we look forward to a great school year. Thank you.
Dr. Nick?
Now.
Now. With a name like Sichard, I wish we'd pronounced it A.
You're fine. You can just call me Jenny and stuff with you. Okay, so we did the, Julie and I did new teacher orientation last week and it was a big hit, we got really good feedback as we sent out a survey asking how we can improve for next year. The bus tour was a hit thanks to Julie, all the people love that and they want to request that for next year. Moving forward, we're going to meet monthly with the new hires, the new teachers here at central office to provide additional support, and then I'm going to be pushing into all of the schools that provide instructional coaching for those new teachers so they, so they don't quit.
Thank you.
I got you. Weekly schedule, I don't like staying in my office the whole time, so like I'm going to be going into every building every week so everyone sees me in my face, and then also when I'm in those buildings, I'll be doing the instructional coaching, but also I'm working on short PD POPS, which are short professional development options for our teachers. I just sent out a survey this morning to ask what they were interested in. So far, I've got a lot of good requests, EdTech tools, intervention ideas, rotational learning models, so I'm working on that, that will start in September for our teachers, and then for those who can't make the PD POPS right after school, I'm going to make a digital option using EdPuzzle. And then every month, I'll send curriculum newsletters to the elementary and secondary, giving shout-outs to our teachers, giving updates on any new EdTech tools that come out, local grant opportunities, stuff like that, and then I'm slowly working on updating the Curriculum Corner website, and my goal this year is to expand it to secondary so the website can be used for K through 12. So that's it.
That's all?
Just a little, just a little.
Mrs. Hamus?
Sure. I'm in a huge learning curve and have a huge shout-out to Nancy Schroder who has come in. There was quite a transition from Nancy to Tammy, who wasn't here long, and then Tammy to me, so we've tried to get my name on all the different platforms. Some of the grants go through middle, some of the grants go through independent platforms, some of them go through title platforms, so we're playing catch-up. And I have learned a lot in two weeks, how to do reimbursements because that's important for money to come back into the corporation. A lot of those were put on hold over the summer, so we've caught up, I think, with all of the reimbursements, but maybe one. I've learned how to do amendments to grants. I had no idea how detailed and difficult some of the ins and outs were, I have a whole new respect for what Mrs. Schroder was doing. We've closed out the SR3 grant and thought that was off my desk, and SR2 was sent back to us for revisions and amendments. That was one spreadsheet that was over 40-some fields, and they kept telling us that field G and field T were incorrect, but wouldn't tell us what was incorrect with them, and gave me some, a 40-page book to read, which I did, and found out what was wrong, and it was actually their fault on their end, but that was about six hours of my life, I'll never be back. Also found out that the high ability office, I didn't call real smart today because how they had us doing some reimbursements and amendments was totally backwards from how every other grant so far has done, and Nancy agreed with that. We are still waiting, we've submitted a Title I grant for this coming year. Usually, that was submitted in February is what Nancy said in past years. They didn't release it until midsummer for us to even fill out. We're still waiting on a special ed grant to be released, can't fill that out yet, typically that's already done by now. Title II and Title IV have not been released, those are federal grants. We don't know why, we keep being told it's going to be next week, it's going to be next week, it's going to be next week. I'm submitting information for a career coaching grant, and that is through our East Central Service Educational Center, and that will help pay for the new career coach that you voted in tonight, and also submitting documentation for the literacy cadre to help pay for our literacy coaches at the elementary level, so I've got that, and we have a few more grants that we're researching. I've talked to technology, Mr. Jamison, we've got some pretty good ideas of what we can do to move forward to get as much cash as possible, and so. Does anybody have any questions? I'm not sure I can answer them, I'm about to answer them, I'm trying, learning. It's a lot, it's a lot, so, thank you.
Mr. Rova?
I'll keep it short since we had our bullet at the beginning. We've got a lot done this summer, all the aid detectors are done, we've ordered all new computers for K6 teachers, so they are not all done yet, but they're going to be over the next month or two. We've also unveiled level 365, Office 365 for those devices, and then next year, we'll be giving licenses to 712 teachers as well when they get new devices. Some projects coming up this fall, we'd like to get new PCs for all the secretaries, we need to upgrade the Wofflin Center, and we're also going to be looking at pricing a new projector for N E as well, so getting some AV upgrades in our buildings and conference technology is something that's on our radar as well, so.
I know that you recognized all of your staff, but we need to recognize you as well. Eight months ago, you had a meeting with us and scared the living bejesus out of us of what could possibly happen, and you have at least calmed our fears, made great strides in my opinion, and you've got a great vision, I, at least I feel like, for this corporation to get closer to where we need to be instead of where we were at, so, you know, thank you and keep doing your hard work because your team couldn't do it if you didn't have the, provide the proper direction for them, so they're only as good as what you are.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. We've got our work cut out for us, that's for sure.
Do the kids know there's vape detectors in the bathrooms?
Oh, I can't. Eventually, I'll leave my stuff in the alerts, but I tell you, we, we're 100% so far on them. Now, we found out that they go, they set off with chemicals that the custodians use, so if an air handler moves air from one room to another, we can set those on automations and silence notifications if we know custodian's going to be able to say from 1:00 to 1:15, or whatever their time slot is, that way it's not annoying, because you'll get 17 in a row saying vapor it, vapor it, vapor it. And it was funny, Liz Meek, I was showing TR Campbell the tamper alert so much, if they saw this tamper or touch, try to touch the detector behind its cage, it's behind a cage so they can't get to it, they so much as just tap it, it howls out like a smoke alarm you could hear from four rooms away. Forty-five seconds after I showed him, Liz is running down the hallway trying to figure out who's messing with it, so. I think it's going to be a really good thing, so, yeah, we should have a lot less trouble.
I'd be remiss, we have a guest in the back row. McKees, are we here for a special project or are we just interested in watching?
He has, go ahead, go ahead. He has to be at a school board meeting for voice apps, so he, it's part of earning a mayor badge.
Are there legal requirements? Welcome, welcome. And you're going, you're running in Tammy's position?
Yes, yeah, Mr. Ford.
Welcome, come back, please, visit us again. Mr. Jamison, is there anything else?
I have nothing further.
Board, is there anything else? Hearing now, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Stadium for signatures.
I'll tie to.